Everyone, thank you for being here, for those in person and also those who are watching live streaming. I will ask the Board Secretary to take a role to establish a quorum for the Board. Letitia?
Yes.
Member Benitez?
Present.
President Craighead?
Present.
Member Lopez?
Present.
And Member Otto?
Here.
We have a quorum. We will have, we will have Mr. Otto lead us in the pledge because our student representative is not here yet. That was a little bit like singing in rounds. It was kind of nice. For those of you present in the room, the Board appreciates and supports community input at our meetings. During the meeting, there will be time for public to comment on matters on the agenda and matters not on the agenda. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here where the Board Secretary is. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form now indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda, and the Board took the following actions. On item 3.1, the Board voted, excuse me, the Board voted 5-0 to lift the expulsion of two students, student ID numbers 8702 and 1390, and assign them to a school or instructional program as recommended by the Office of Student Replacement, Student Placement Services. On item 3.3, Public Employee Release, the Board voted 5-0 to approve a retirement agreement release with a permanent certificated teacher, resolving all claims between the parties and providing for consideration. On item 3.5, the Board voted to provide authority to the district to continue negotiations regarding the two properties listed on the agenda. The vote was 3-2 with Ms. Craighead, Mr. Otto, and Dr. Benitez in favor, Mr. Miller and Ms. Lopez opposed. And finally, with item 3.6, the Board voted 5-0 to provide authority to District Legal Counsel to settle the case listed on the agenda. Adoption of the agenda. So are there any changes? Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Well, we would introduce our student representative, but she's not here. So recognition and acknowledgements. I should check my agenda. Ah, there we go.
Young Black Scholars is a club. We offer it to anybody that wants to come and support us, just for us to have like a sense of belonging and get a lot of black kids around. We just try to give them a sense of place to find theirselves and kind of connect with other people at Wilson.
The club is one piece of our intervention for African-American students on campus. We're trying to put in systems that, that help support the students on a day-to-day basis. Our African-American students aren't graduating and they're dropping out more than their counterparts. And so we want to figure out ways that we can improve that experience. And so the Young Black Scholars is a part of the bigger program.
My experience at the Young Black Scholars Club has been amazing. I've been building connections with other students on campus and staff, and I got to explore my talents and grow the club.
I contribute a lot of the growth to the ideas that my leaders came up with.
We had a step show where we got a whole bunch of sororities and fraternities to come and step for us, and we offered it to like everyone. So it was just assembly and it was really big. We'd come up with like different service events. We do a lot.
We have a lot of people involved in there, academics, and wanted to stay in class and come to a place where they feel most comfortable at.
It's making me feel more connected with my people. I've built another family within the school.
I hear a lot of students say like, oh, it feels like family. You know, it feels like I'm at home at Thanksgiving and we could just let it all hang out and we could just be ourselves.
It's nice to have these little reflections and see what's happening in our schools, get to meet some of our students, and it's, it's nice to see these positive programs that are going on. Let's see, we have no public hearing. Public testimony on items listed on the agenda, we have none. And so, public testimony on items not listed on the agenda, we have 11. So I would just like to remind everyone that the, due to California law, the Board cannot enter into a discussion on any items not listed on the agenda. Board members or staff may ask clarifying questions or provide clarification regarding the public comments, but such a discussion is limited. We have three minutes per speaker with a total of 30 minutes for public comment. And first, we have Ron Harmon.
President Craighead and members of the Board, I am Ron Harmon. I am here today to inform you that the district is not listening to its stakeholders, namely teachers, as evidenced by their current bargaining proposals. The district is not listening to the community, which recognizes that teachers commit and sacrifice their personal time to support students. This time occurs before the school year starts with setting up their classrooms to welcome students into a new year of learning. It often continues when a school day ends with the worry and concern of how to best move all students forward, and everywhere in between that a student needs to be supported. And yes, it even occurs on teachers' duty-free lunches. It is the conferences with students, parents, phone calls, emails, letters, postcards, and personal contacts for the benefit of students, and yet, the district is not listening. The district seeks to impose additional days of service for teachers without consulting their stakeholders, namely teachers. They have proposed a grand bargaining strategy of agree or else, with the or else being able to be compensated to keep up with inflation. The community understands the value of teachers, and yet, the district is not listening. The community who put you into your positions of power trusts you to trust the direct stakeholders in their children's everyday lives, teachers. They trust you to ensure that the district looks out for the well-being of their teachers by listening directly to them. They have given you this power to ensure that the district must listen because you are the safeguard of their collective voice. They know that you are listening because, as I have outlined ever so briefly, given my time, and you can say it with me, even if it's just in your head, the district is not listening. You've now been informed. In order to listen effectively, you must be silent.
My name is Megan Mu, and I teach at Stanford Middle School. I would like to share my reasons for being opposed to the district's proposed extra four days. My first reason for opposing the four extra days is that it would require me and my colleagues with young children to obtain four days of childcare every year. My daughter and soon-to-be-born son will all be attending Long Beach Unified Schools and will not have school on those extra days. Many of my colleagues have students, have children who are students in the district and are finding daycare for all of them is going to be an added stress and financial burden. Secondly, we have already approved a district calendar that has been shared with families. To change it now means parents will be unprepared for the additional childcare required by adding these non-student days to a calendar that has already been published. Third, the current district proposal is to take away four out of 52 summer vacation days, which is 7.7% of our summer vacation. I use my summer vacation to have more time with my family and children while they have their summer break. This would be four days every year when I would not be able to spend time with my kids, which is worth more to me than a 2% increase in salary, especially with a new baby on the way. These are reasons why I oppose the extra four days. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Terrence Booth.
Okay, well, I'm having technical difficulties with my, with my iPad, but I'd like to introduce myself. I am Terrence Booth. I am a counselor at Millikan High School, also a part of the Talb Executive Board as the Millikan Elementary Director. I'm here to really to speak on behalf of my counseling colleagues. There's just a lot of concerns, a lot of issues that have come up this year, you know, especially at the, at the high school level. We wanted to, you know, address the issue of, with us being a late-start school, high school counselors have been mandated to work a shift from 8:30 to 5:00 p.m., and we are the only certificated staff that are required to work those hours. And no one ever really explained to us why that was given, we were put on that schedule in the first place. You know, we've asked, and just speaking with my colleagues at the other high schools as well, they, everyone says after 4 o'clock, there's really no one on our campuses. And so we're just wondering, why do we have to work those hours? You know, many of us are parents, you know, we do have children and, you know, so now we're picking up our, our children, you know, later in the day. Just an example is, a few weeks ago, I had to pick my daughter up, who she is actually a student here in the district. She attends Browning High School. And my daughter is normally one of the last person, last kids to get picked up in front of the school. It was a few weeks ago, it was really, it was dark, it was raining, cold, you know, and I can't leave my job until 5 o'clock, you know. So I get to my daughter, it's 5:15, 5:20, it's dark, it was raining, it's cold. My daughter, she's calling me, she's, you know, like, Dad, you know, I'm here by myself, there's no one in front of the school, you know, which is really, that just really bothered me. You know, so these are just the, you know, the things that, that myself and my colleagues are, are dealing with too. And, you know, also, in addition to, to that, we also would like you to consider or reconsider some of the responsibilities that have been put on, placed on counselors. A lot of times, we are unable to perform our duties because we're doing a lot of administrative-type duties and are non-counseling, so we're not being as effective as we can, as we could be with our, for our students. You know, we need to, we need to be there as, to advocate, you know, especially with a lot of social-emotional things going on. We've seen an increase in, you know, there's suicides and suicidal ideation, and we're just not allowed to service our students because we're doing other admin or supervision-type duties. And I think that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jerry Morrison.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jerry Morrison. I'm a teacher at McBride High School. I'm here also speaking as a member of Talb and in fact, as a member of the bargaining team. And so I would like to echo a couple of the comments that have already been made about how the negotiations are going this year. This year, as you know, we're not negotiating the full contract. And so, in the process of sunshining, which items we will be discussing, we submit ours and you submit yours. And so you can imagine, we were a little bit surprised to find out that one of the things that not only the district's wanting to negotiate, but are ready to die on it, is this idea of extending the school year. Now, I know you have fancy lawyers who can explain why the rules don't apply to your side, and you can bring it up. But teachers were a little bit shocked. The bargaining team was shocked because this just seemed like another occasion when they were being asked to do more. We've just come through the pandemic. We worked harder than the teachers in the other districts. We didn't get a reduced workday to take into account of all the other extra things we did. We were expected to do our full day and deal with everything else. So finally, we get through that and we get to the point, well, okay, this year it's going to be pretty simple. Bargaining is going to be simple, and we're going to get a substantial pay raise, and we can all get back, get back and appreciate our jobs, knowing that the district appreciates us. Instead, what we have is the district holding hostage a pay raise to the idea that we work more again, that we increase our, our school year. We just had a survey ourselves, because you didn't, we had a survey of teachers, and 2/3 of teachers say, no, they don't want to do extra days. How would you have known that? Nobody asked them. Nobody asked teachers, nobody asked parents, nobody asked the community. All the stakeholders, not just teachers, were all ignored in this process. And we're being told that this is it. There's no, there's no pay raise without increasing the school day. Teachers know that they're being held hostage. Teachers read the news, they speak to their friends, they know teachers in other school districts have had substantial pay raises. It's now February, prices keep going up, and we still don't have even a hint of our negotiations coming to a conclusion unless teachers agree to these four days. My suggestion to you is that you rethink this. Already, the district has backed, backed down. Initially, the proposal was to start this new schedule next year. Now, we're being told it can be put off till the year. My suggestion is you rethink it, spend the next year discussing it with the stakeholders, negotiate a pay deal this year, and come back and talk about the consequences of these four days next year, next time around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carrie McBride.
Good afternoon. I'm Carrie McBride. I'm from Wilson High School. To whom it may concern, we, the undersigned teachers, along with counselors at Wilson High School, have been made aware of the district's proposal to the Talb bargaining team that includes adding four more workdays to the school year as a stipulation to compensation negotiations. It is widely known that California's state budget surplus will be well over $70 billion, and widely known that many surrounding school districts are increasing teacher pay by 8%, 9%, and 10%. Currently, La Mirada is seeking 11% increase, Santa Monica is seeking 10%, Compton is seeking 10%, and LA Unified is seeking a 20% increase. Yet, last year, Long Beach teachers only received a 4.5% raise after the harrowing challenges of teaching during the COVID lockdown and delivering an ever-expanding district curriculum. Currently, the offer we are pressured to accept is one that increases our workload by four days, paid at our current rate, yet disingenuously presented by the district as a raise. We find this to demonstrate an extreme lack of equity, promise, and respect by the district for our work and dedication to our professional excellence. Teachers have endured climbing increases in responsibilities in addition to creating and universally implementing engaging, age-appropriate, equity-focused, differentiated, and culturally-relevant curriculum. Students' rising mental health concerns have resulted in exponentially more challenging practice as counselors work as CSAs instead of student advocates with teachers playing roles of psychologists, therapists, and restorative justice practitioners. As the number of school shootings continue to occur nationwide, there has been a dramatic reduction in school safety and personnel. Wilson teachers are confronted with aggressive behaviors, threats, assaults, and verbal abuse by students. There is no support from district resources or interventions, and alarmingly little or no repercussions for students. Educators are expected to extend equity without adequate safety while student behavior goes ignored without consequence. The recently-withdrawn proposal of the district to decrease promised compensation for teachers with National Board certification was received as an effort to set up divisive dynamic between teachers. For teachers and counselors, the district actions and communications reflect a leadership mindset that demeans and demoralizes Long Beach educators and is in opposition to the professed values of the Long Beach Unified School District. The message is that teachers are not worthy. When will the commitment and work of teachers and counselors be enough? Where is the equity for teachers and counselors?
The time is up. I'm going to ask you to stop because your time is up. Next, we have Peter Larson.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Peter Larson, and I'm the Vice President of Talb. I also teach math at Jordan High School in District 1, and I'm a resident of District 5. Equity. It's what the district has been emphasizing in recent years. Equity is said to be the key to achieving excellence. But what is it? Equity can be described as what is needed, providing what is needed. How do you know what is needed, though? One way that should be obvious is to ask the experts. And after you ask, you listen. You see your doctor when you have health problems. You consult a lawyer with legal questions. You call a tax professional if you can't figure out your IRS forms. These are examples of experts in their fields. That's who you ask, and you'd be foolish not to listen. In education, the experts don't work in district office buildings. They work in classrooms and in schools. They are the teachers, counselors, nurses, teacher librarians, speech pathologists, psychologists, and education support professionals that work hard every day and often into the night to make sure every child has the opportunity to succeed. They're happy to tell you what they need to help their children the most. Do you listen? For the last few years, educators in Long Beach have consistently said that the professional development offered by the district has mostly been disappointing. It's been out of touch and not a productive use of time. The district has been told this, but have you listened? The educators of Long Beach go to extraordinary lengths to develop their practice and to provide high-quality educational opportunities every single day for their children, for the children of Long Beach. A large majority of them are opposed to adding professional development days because they know from experience they won't be useful. They also know that there isn't data to justify the addition of these days. The experts are saying these extra days will not help drive student achievement. Are you listening?
Thank you. Next, we have Nushi.
I'm Nushi Baron. Looking at issues from multiple perspectives is something I've done for most of my life because I know when people are seen and gotten, they feel empowered and will rise to meet their highest potential. I've been working at LBUSD for 20 years with great pride for what we do every day by putting students first. However, the reality of my colleagues and I right now is we're feeling dismissed. So I'm here to understand the reason behind your recent decisions and shed light on our perspective. According to the superintendent's strategic plan, the intention of goal number three is to promote academic growth for every student. I wonder if the number of increased assessments is contributing to this goal. According to the district's assessment timeline, 3rd graders alone are being assessed 41 days out of the year. Wrap your mind around that. Example, a three-hour iReady test is administered over a three-day period because they're 8- and 9-year-olds. Multiply that by performance tasks, math unit tests, the priority standards assessment, not to mention S-Back. Keep in mind, some of these are done two to three times a year. Why are we testing children this much? Did LBUSD decide to increase the number of assessments because you thought we lowered expectations and rigor, or you thought this was best practice to accelerate students who are below grade level? Please, please help us understand. To paraphrase the superintendent's safety goals, provide a safe, welcoming, rigorous environment for all. Is it accurate to say that your past PDs are, have contributed to this? After speaking to teachers across the district, I beg to differ. Here are some of their stories just from this week. Students have attacked peers, teachers, and staff. Students brag about engaging in illegal activities on campus. Major problems pop up because of social media. What's the common denominator? No consequences were given. Did we miss something? Are consequences a bad thing all of a sudden? Did LBUSD decide holding students and staff accountable is punitive? My colleagues and I are confused by your priorities. You've increased our assessments, which decreases teacher time. You've spent $45 million on furniture, but decreased support for next year. I'm curious what your priorities are. We need your support in holding students accountable for their actions, limiting assessments to what's appropriate for their age, trusting that we know how to create a warm and engaging environment while implementing a rigorous curriculum. After all, the best way to get buy-in is to see us and hear us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Robin Creason.
Hello, my name is Robin Creason. I have been a teacher in LBUSD for more than 25 years. I am also a member of the Talb Executive Board. I'm here this afternoon to represent teachers in our district. We have taken surveys, written letters, and emails, but still feel that we are not heard. We are here today en masse because we love our students. Teachers know what students need, yet many decisions being made by the district did not take classroom teacher input. What do we need to be heard? What do we need to do to make sure you are listening to us? Since January, our students have been testing iReady, Edulastic, ELA, and Math Unit assessments. The district is, sorry, assured this would be remedied this year. Have you ever watched a seven-year-old type a paragraph? That's what one assessment calls for, a writing assessment that was scheduled to take five days. It's taken two weeks. These 2nd graders did not have in-person kindergarten, and most are one to two years behind. behind. During our testing period at my school, we had a CIV walkthrough and a furniture refresh where teachers had to mark the furniture that was staying, mark the furniture that was going, pack everything up while we were teaching. This was not okay. When are you going to hear us? At 7:00 AM last Friday, I was in my classroom with overflowing furniture that doesn't fit. Student chairs do not stack. They're too heavy. Who made these choices? We were in need of furniture, yes, but we had no input. And why? Why disrupt the learning year? Another poor decision made without teacher input. Last year, the district began what was to be a three-year TOSA intervention to help our lowest students. That has changed every year since that three-years program. Those TOSA's are being put in to substitute, to go to trainings, which messes up with the flow of what our students need. We need you, the district, the Board of Education, to hear us. We're yelling outside now. All we want is to be heard and to have our voices count. We are LBUSD.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Larson.
My name is Jennifer Larson. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Twain Elementary School. I've been teaching in this district for 25-plus years, and I'm an alumni of this district. Go Jackrabbits! I'm here tonight to address the proposed additional four days of professional development for teachers. I believe that all teachers are in favor of equity and excellence. I constantly hear the school district referring to asset-based instruction, especially when we consider how to bring in our students' own cultures and recognize the richness in diversity that they add to our classrooms. We talk about uplifting our communities, but this asset-based approach is never extended to the teachers. We have a lot of good, even great, teachers in this district, but our district PD is always developed outside the classroom. Curiously enough, when we went into the shutdown and had to teach online, the biggest and most significant change in education in probably the last 100 years, we had five days of training where teachers had to largely figure things out on their own because everything was so new and even the trainers did not know what to do. And now the district wants to impose four days of training on us? For what? What is the plan? Two summers ago, we were all tasked with equity training for five days, eight hours a day. That was probably quite expensive, but then never mentioned again. The executive staff is trying to sell us on this four days of PD, but the PD is poorly thought out. It isn't that teachers don't want to work. Most teachers give up a week of their summer to come in and set up their classroom because they're dedicated and engaged in what is happening in education. It's just that teachers don't want to waste their time doing something that doesn't make an impact on student achievement. Should teachers be getting paid for setting up their classrooms? Absolutely. There's been no stakeholder input about this PD. The teachers are in front of the kids, directly delivering instruction for five hours a day. There are 65,000 kids in this district. You can do the math. We are the ones that have the most effect on student outcomes, yet the district messaging is still, because we are failing? Admin, executive staff is going to fix this through PD that is coming from people outside the classroom. It's not equitable because it does not solicit input from the stakeholders. If the district isn't interested in asset-based PD, School Board, I ask you, ask the teachers, the parents, the students. Who are the teachers that are closing the achievement gap, and what can we learn from them? There are friends, there are siblings, there are domestic partners, our spouses, our neighbors. They are the instructors of our children. And trying to pass off this four-day PD as a 2.2 percent raise is offensive. It is merely paying us for extra days that we worked. It's like serving us a turd sandwich for lunch and then saying, "But it was free." Thank you.
Mimi.
I'm Mimi Kao, fifth-grade teacher at Los Ritos in my 22nd year with Long Beach. I'm a former student of LBUSD and currently the Jordan Area Elementary Director for the Teachers Association of Long Beach. Madam President, I'd like for you to convey my thanks and gratitude to the single board member of my area for her responses to the two emails that I've sent in the last two weeks, including one last night, to which she very kindly replied that it was a late hour and Valentine's Day. I also appreciate the extension of an offer to meet in person to discuss the concerns I shared. Additionally, I am personally requesting and would sincerely welcome a response from each board member and district senior staff member who received an email from me previously expressing my concerns. Today, I'm primarily here to address the current round of negotiations between the Teachers Association and the district. Fact, while bargaining started in September, the district only in December introduced a proposal to extend the duty year for teachers by four days. This late introduction feels very much like an ambush and a blind sign. So specifically, it means we would start the school year earlier, or end the school year later, or both, depending on the placement of these days in the school year calendar. The district team even had the audacity to suggest adding days at the end of our current school year or the start of the next school year this fall, suggesting that it was feasible, disregarding how early plans are made and the fact that the district calendars had already been voted on through 2024. Did you think we would welcome the idea of losing four days of our summer break? Fact, these mandated professional development days are proposed to overwhelmingly be scheduled with minimal to no input from teachers, with only a token two hours at the end of an eight-hour workday for teacher discretion. And though teachers would be compensated for the additional required duty time scheduled as these days, it is in fact not a quote-unquote "raise" and should not be fronted or insinuated as such. Getting paid more because you're working more is not a raise. And fact, the most recent survey sent out by the association asking members if they are in favor of the current four-day proposal was voted at over 66 percent "no." The TALB Board of Directors has voted to authorize the bargaining team to resist and refuse this specific proposal to honor the input of our members per the results of this survey. We don't want it. The district has actually increased the amount of required PD this year, including trainings during the instructional day, requiring us to prepare subplans for a full instructional day in the classroom, then go and attend a day of training, and afterwards transition back to our students. This is in essence requiring us to work time and a half. You already have more of our time this year, taking us away from working directly with our students, and you think we need even more demands on our time. This current proposal is ill-conceived and untenable. You need to manage the time you already require from teachers more efficiently and more effectively. Please honor our input. No to four more days.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Garcia.
Good afternoon or evening, everyone. I'm Susan Garcia, a teacher at Powell and also an executive board member of TALB. And a member speaking to an item not on the agenda. 67 percent of TALB members said "no" to a district bargaining proposal to increase our school year by four days for professional development. Why was this? A year ago, TALB conducted a survey, and what we found out, and we surveyed the morale of our teachers, what we found out was that 79 percent of our teachers were on the lower end on a four-point scale of not feeling good about our schools, not feeling good about our profession. And so the question is, why? Why was this? Yeah, we got out of a pandemic. We were working on things like that. But it really was, we have a district that's not listening to us and not accepting our true input. They ask us at the end of a meeting, "What type of PD would you like?" And we're thinking, "I need to get the hell out of here. I want to go home." So we either don't answer, or we write something down, and you're not getting a true response. The next thing they ask us, there's other items. We're being ignored. We are not giving input as to how we want things moved. Let's give true input. Let's have a discussion. Let's figure out how we can work together. We don't have to work. It's not us or you. We have one mission, to educate our youth so that they can be successful citizens that think critically, solve problems, and can lead this country, this earth, to be successful for their, for posterity. If we fail, this whole world fails in this part of the area, and it's just like dominoes falling apart. So why is it that we don't want four extra days PD? Well, you didn't ask us what we really wanted. You didn't ask us what we needed. Why do you want to give me an additional PD day when I don't even know how to have the time to integrate it into my current curriculum that has a lot of standards? And then you're adding some other stuff that come over here at this equity. Oh, here, look at all these wonderful resources that I found for you. And I'm going, when do you want me to do this? I do need to sleep. I do need to grade papers. I need to do all my preps, and I need to be there for my students. And yes, our students need us. There's been a shift on how we teach now. It's not the same. Our kids, the retention span is different. So please vote "no."
I'd like to thank everybody for coming and speaking, and I think Dr. Brown has something to contribute.
I do. I'd like to say that we've listened to the comments made by TALB this evening, and we have provided clarifying comments to what has been shared in a bargaining update that's dated today. Thank you.
And so who will be receiving this bargaining update?
It's available. No.
It's available right now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Also, the student rep that we were expecting from Renaissance turns out is sick, but we have another student from Renaissance who will fill in, and that's Matthew Taylor. So I'm going to go back to that part of, come on up. Come on up. There's a spot for you over here by Mr. Miller. We understand that you've graciously agreed to fill in, and so there's a place on the agenda that I skipped over for the student representative. So we'll have that, we'll just let that die down a bit. We have no control over what happens on the outside of the building. We have control over what happens inside this room, but not outside the building. It'd be nice if the adults out there would be respectful for the fact that we have an actual student in here wanting to speak. It's now quiet. I think we're ready, but we welcome you. Nope, not ready yet. Okay, we'll just take a second. Let's try that again. We welcome you, and now it's going to be your turn to let us know what's happening at Renaissance. Introduce yourself. We're happy to have you.
Hello. My name is, first of all, I would like to thank Superintendent Dr. Baker, board meters, and LBUSD staff and guests for welcoming me to this board meeting. My name is Matthew Taylor. I am the current vice president of Renaissance High School for the Arts. I am a senior. It's my last year. I went to Renaissance, I went to Renaissance actually to learn how to play, create video games, but I discovered a love for painting and agriculture. I am graduating with the hopes of attending Stanford University, and my pathways are arts, visual arts, performative arts, and entertainment. I've done all four years of drawing and painting, and I'm currently taking AP Art. And although I feel I am far from perfect, I think my imperfections help bring character, personality, and give, give character to the works that I create for our community. With that being said, I would like to start off with our Renaissance year, starting with preregistration and orientation, where we provided food, games, and music for all of our new students, as well as plenty of old and returning students seeing their, getting that blast from the past, visiting their old school. We helped build a stronger sense of community with the people in our area, having big events such as our College and Career Center and concerts and shows hosted, hosted by the same staff and members, staff members and teachers that we see in our halls and in our classrooms. Annually, we also had our Halloween Fest this year. It was a great outlet for our many artists and students to express themselves and show their stuff, show what they've been working on, show how they've grown and their creative process and performances, performances from our school's many different clubs, all relating to the Halloween season, of course. And we've even had events where we've invited family and loved ones to our campus for things like Feast with Family and Eating with Loved Ones. Our February Spirit Week is also, well, it's actually this week, we're celebrating Valentine's Day as well as Black History Month, which will end in a Black History Month celebration in which different arts strands will perform pieces celebrating black culture and artists. Additionally, in collaboration with other small schools in the district, we just recently finished our Winter Formal, where us and about 500 students from other smaller schools dressed up and, dressed up in a masquerade-themed winter formal and had a great night of dancing, games, and fun. And we look a lot forward to working with those same schools for our prom in the near future. At Renaissance, we, to circle back, we really strive our College and Career Center. I'm in there pretty much every day, working on things like my FAFSA, and sending transcripts to high school is a very tedious and important process that everyone has to go through, every senior has to go through. This year, members of the community from the arts industry and other career fields were guest speakers, sharing their journey to be successful persons that, to our students. We had a meet where we had, man, we had a Disney representative, we had props and makeup representatives, we had business corporations, plenty of people coming down and spreading to the community their knowledge of how they got into their fields and how they grew to be the people they are. It was very interesting to see people from professional industries that some of our students hope to get into in the flesh, getting to see them, you know, exist, knowing that they're real and knowing that it's possible. I could see a lot of smiles and happy faces on that day. Really helps bring the real world to high schoolers. As for the things we do artistically, each strand has events showcases that their hard work throughout the year. One of the more recent ones, well, it hasn't happened yet, but it's coming up, is our AP Art Portfolio showcasing, in which AP students, such as myself and many others, will have to show off 15 pieces that they have created over the course of their senior year. Very similar to a museum showing or a gallery exposition, a great way to kind of give a taste of the real world to our students. And visual, and our performing arts consist of jazz performances, as well as orchestra performances, solo pieces, covers, and whatever our students deem their best work. Giving a small performance to the school, staff, and teachers, as well as queuing in to letting them know that they are very serious about commitment to colleges and, colleges and their futures. Our vocal music has participated in the Oceanside Jazz Festival, the Bob Cole Honors Festival at CSULB, along with our dance group, dance and stage crew at the Belmont Shore Christmas Parade, and the Spring Pops Show in March, which we will be attending, the spring, as well as the Spring Choral Concert in May. Our dance department also has had many shows at theaters, at the Pauli and Wilson Theaters, and we, some of my closer friends are actually venturing off into their own, separate-from-school dance performances with other programs. Our theater is putting on the Spring Musical Festival, or the Spring Musical Freaky Friday, and all of our performing arts are collaborating together to perform in the Spring Musical. At Renaissance, we encourage collaboration between pathways to further cement the idea of teamwork and camaraderie. When we put on a musical, it's not just, oh, these theater kids get to strut their stuff. When we put on a musical, it's not just, oh, these theater kids get to strut their stuff. It's theater kids doing their thing, music kids helping them, art kids making posters and flyers. It takes help from everyone in our school to make these things happen. And to end, I would like to thank, by giving props to all of the Renaissance students, some of the most smartest and bravest and talented people that I know go to that school. The passion to flow and thanks to, I want to give a thanks to our teachers as well. Ms. Pap, she's over there, my math teacher. It's people like her that are the reason I feel I have a chance in this world. It's people like her that are the reason I feel I can make it as an adult and things like college become a little less scary. Encouraging our students in a space made for them to grow and flourish to their best peoples. Go Phoenixes!
Well, thank you, Matthew. And is that just something you threw together, like on your way in or something? No. That, that sounded like a report you had worked on for a while.
Thank you.
And we are so happy to hear all that. You mentioned having your sights set on Stanford?
Yes.
And would you be pursuing an art education at Stanford or something else?
I am, I'm practicing to become a painter. Sorry, sorry. I'm practicing, I'm currently studying to become a painter. My, my dream is to have my own exhibit when I'm older.
Okay, that's fabulous. Dr. Benitez.
Matthew, since you stepped up here for your classmate, commend you for coming in today. And you're getting a good sense, actually, of democracy, civic engagement, and the history of our labor movement. So it's a good night for you to be here. We are currently trying to figure out and conceptualize what to do with some Prop 28 funds that are supposed to go right into arts and music. So given where you're at right now and where your aspirations are at, do you have any suggestions on what our district could do more of to support students pursuing arts, music?
Well, something I notice is a lot of art students are very creative and they're very perceptive. And art kids aren't really the richest in town. But struggling with financial problems and learning to grow from them is something I see a lot of students do on a daily basis. But it does have its limitations. I've seen kids have to scrap projects, have to cancel dates because of work, or cancel performances because they have other obligations, simply due to lack of finances. I think a lot of kids, it's not so much they won't be able to accomplish certain things, but accomplishing those things is a lot harder than it needs to be. And it's a lot more tedious. Something as simple as putting on a show or getting the paints to paint a wall, it becomes a, how am I going to do that with money? And more of a, how am I going to do that with my own skill? I feel a lot of the students at my school lack the, lack the, hmm, trying to think of a perfect word to use. I think a lot of the students at my school lack the confidence to pursue certain, or to take risk, or pursue different mediums, simply due to financial restrictions. Yes.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you. Our, our chief financial officer is listening intently here. Thank you for that.
Colleagues, anyone else?
Oh, I just want to say that Stanford will be very lucky if they have you. So, yes, you're doing a great job at school. It sounds like there's a lot happening at Renaissance. And again, I think Stanford's going to be very lucky if they take you as a student.
Thank you.
Mr. Otto?
Sure. Is this your senior year?
Yes, this is my senior year.
Great, have you had an opportunity to visit the campus yet?
I'm waiting for my spring break because I have a lot of other extracurricular activities that I have to keep up with. But I think that first week of spring break, I'm going to go check it out.
Great. Is there anything in particular that attracted you to Stanford as a place to go?
Well, my first thought when I was looking at colleges was I don't want to stay, okay, that sounds, okay, I'm not going to say that. My first, my first thought was I would like to see somewhere new. But I still wanted, a lot of my family is in Long Beach, so I didn't want to leave the state. I figured San Francisco would be a nice breath of fresh air. And I was looking into the school more and more and the program seemed to fit what I want to pursue in life.
You'll have to watch Mr. Benitez, or Dr. Benitez here, who will, before you leave, try and get you to go to UCLA.
Yes.
Congratulations, you sound like you're on a great path.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Well, first off, thank you for presenting today on, I'm assuming, short notice. How much time did they give you?
I was giving this speech like half an hour ago.
Well, that's called super short notice. And so, well, first off, thank you again. One of the things that I was just appreciative of from the speech and just the way that you spoke, little improv from time to time.
I am, I am the captain of my school's improv team.
There we go. And I can sense that, right? I think that's one thing that makes Long Beach Unified and some of our high school campuses so gosh darn cool, is that each one of them has their own little culture. And I think the culture at Renaissance is just palpable with creatives and improvisation like you just showed today.
It's actually the second time I've had to improv a speech this week.
Well, sir, you did.
I've got my practices.
Yeah, I was going to say, you've done it magnificently. And once again, I think you represented the Phoenixes quite well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Another round of applause. But I'm sure we're the better, the better audience. And we're going to, we're going to take a photo. Usually what we do is do a photo with the student representative. So we're going to take a moment. So Matthew, we appreciate you being here, but we know it's a school night and you probably have either homework or an art project or something. So we are going to let you sneak out if you'd like, or you're welcome to stay here.
Or if you've got another improv speech to give someplace.
Okay, and for us, next on the agenda is the Consent Calendar A.
Move the focal? Second.
Third.
Any discussion? You did, but I'll allow it. Any discussion? Oh, Mr. Otto, is that for a discussion or you just left your mic on?
I think Dr. Brown has something.
Oh, okay.
I was just hoping that Mr. Moskowitz could take a moment to highlight one of the items around Camp Oaks.
Thank you for reminding me. I was off track a bit. Mr. Moskowitz?
All right, thank you very much. You'll recall in our December 14th meeting, I came and shared a little bit of information about some work we've been doing behind the scenes to consider an outdoor education program that would benefit all the fifth grade students here in Long Beach, really building on the rich tradition of outdoor education at High Hill that we unfortunately had to close back in about 2010. And so since that time, just through that conversation with you as the board, we've had opportunities to gather some additional input through our teacher council representatives, really hearing from them some of the things we need to consider, hearing how we want to try to maintain some of the High Hill traditions as best we can. We've been working behind the scenes, the business office has done great work, Ms. Takashi's team, John Tamura, Susan Ginder, Wayne Strumford, Renee Arcus. We've had, it's really cross-departmental. We've had Dr. Kale, we've had Ms. Dalton from HR, working with Dr. Simon and considering the needs of our, all of our students and making sure that the program that we develop will meet the needs of all of our students. So at this point, we feel confident that we're ready to bring forward to you tonight a contract, a five-year contract with YMCA, to be able to run an outdoor education program up at Camp Oaks for all of our fifth grade students, starting the 23-24 school year. This will also allow us with the vote tonight, it'll allow us to continue to work with our labor partners, to continue to talk to our parents. I'll be attending the Community Advisory Committee meeting in March to talk to our families of students with special needs, to see what we need to consider from their perspective. So this just gives us that opportunity to move forward in the planning. It allows the YMCA to move forward with hiring, developing the curriculum, the training of staff that will be required. So just real excited. I know our community, we received a lot of outreach from folks who maybe worked at High Hill in the past, attended High Hill in the past. We know there's huge community support for this, and we're just excited for the vote tonight and hopefully move forward with deeper planning.
Well, that is a, a dream come true. I, I didn't even think it was possible for us to entertain that dream, to have another opportunity for High Hill. So thank you so much. And I know that there are so many parents and students out there who are going to just be so excited to have this opportunity. So any further discussion? Letitia, I'll have you take a roll call vote.
Sure. Member Benitez?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And Member Otto?
Aye.
That passes 5-0.
Thank you. And maybe add enthusiastically and support that one. We will move to Consent Calendar B. Mr. Miller? Or, or should we take the, you know what?
I move to approve.
Yeah, let's do that.
Mr. Miller needs to recuse himself from this consent calendar.
Okay, so we'll do.
I'll wait for somebody to do the second and then I'll.
Okay, just need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. I will recuse myself from Consent Calendar B, as I have potential conflict of interest under Government Code Sections 1090 and 87100. SoCal Gas provides services to the Long Beach Unified School District and has, in the last 12 months, provided a donation to the nonprofit corporation Rancho Los Amigos Foundation, of which I am the CEO.
Thank you. We will now have a roll call vote. Letitia?
Member Benitez?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
And Member Otto?
Aye.
That passes 4-0 with one abstention.
Thank you. We will move to New Business, Approval of Resolution 021523-A, Measure Q.
Move for approval? Second.
Any discussion?
Is Mr. Ryzen here today? Do we want to speak a little bit to it?
Yeah, this is, this item will simply certify the election results for Measure Q and for submission to the county.
Mr. Ryzen, could you just give sort of a snapshot of what next steps are if this item's approved tonight?
Yes, so in front of you tonight is a legally required resolution that the Board would pass acknowledging the passage of Measure Q by the voters. And it was legally conducted in, in our community for Measure Q. Following the adoption, we will be filing this paper with the county, which officially acknowledges the passage of Measure Q. Following that, our staff will be working internally to develop project priorities and project planning for Measure Q. Our intent is to bring that to the Board in our March workshop to have an in-depth discussion about those priorities and the work that would be envisioned in the first phases of Measure Q that we'll be presenting to you for, for, for opportunities to collaborate.
Thank you, Mr. Ryzen. I'm hoping that at that time too, after our March workshop, we can also reach out to our labor partners to have those conversations that we started with our Community Workforce Development Agreement a few years ago as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ryzen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Next, we have Report of Board Members and Announcement. So you can do an announcement with your report, and we're going to start with Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, Madam President. Just two quick announcements to report on for, two quick things for me to report on. One is I want to give a big shout out to Dr. Lund and Middle School K-8 Level Head, Level Office for putting on a great School of Choice Fair at Browning two weekends ago. Just full transparency, I love that we had that there at Browning specifically, that it was outdoors, and that we pulled it out of our education celebration, because I think it really gave parents a chance to hunker down on the middle school conversations. Normally, we have our elementary schools there, there's a lot of stuff going on, but I do think that caregivers, families, students, parents have a unique opportunity when they just have the middle schools and the K-8s there. So big ups to you, Dr. Lund. I thought the venue worked great and I saw a great turnout that day and a lot of parents, community members, students actually hitting you up for questions as well. So thanks to everyone that came out. We also had an opportunity there to continue our strategic planning input session, so that was going on simultaneously. So congratulations to the strategic planning team. I also wanted to share that this last week, I started the Cohort for the Council of Great City Schools on Student Outcomes Focused Governance. I think, actually, I know Mr. Otto participated in that last year. So just to refresh our community members' memories, we have some unfinished work left to do in terms of our shared governance and our shift toward a student outcome focused governance approach. Namely, we are also in the process of still needing to develop board goals that will align with our strategic priorities as a district and with our superintendent's goals. Part of this requires that we also develop some data monitoring and a calendar. So I appreciate that over the last six to eight months, Dr. Baker with the team, Dr. C. Brown have shifted our agendas to be more student outcomes facing and that we've had a lot of data. This month was a little light, but I'm looking forward to continuing that in March. And I think it's important for us as a goal and as a district to build our capacity, because data is great, we absolutely need it, but also around how we analyze and interpret data, what we do with data, and how we hold ourselves accountable as a, as a board to uphold and advance our community's vision around student success. So as a part of my role at the Council of Great City Schools cohort on this, I want to bring some of that back and sort of reintroduce these conversations that we started actually two years ago as a board, at least two years ago, and that we continue and sort of finalize those key steps that then get us to a place where we can hold our district and ourselves accountable to those goals that we set. So I'll have more to report back on. We have a retreat this weekend that I'll be attending and I'm looking forward to re-engaging in those conversations with my colleagues.
Great, thank you. Mr. Otto?
Well, I will pivot a little bit to continue what Dr. Benitez is talking about, because I did go through this program. It was a nine-month program, rigorous, lots of assignments to complete. You meet people from other school districts throughout the United States who are also engaged in this process. And it's a very inspiring process, you learn a lot. And I have now graduated to the, to the next step of this, which means that I will be the Long Beach Unified School District Representative on the Council of Great City Schools Board. Dr. Baker is on the actual board. I am our representative to that board. And there is a meeting in Washington DC in March where it's their annual legislative and, and, and issues meeting. And I'm looking forward to that because it will bring in people from all over the United States to talk about the agenda of what it is that's going forward. Here in Long Beach, what we're doing is on the 24th and 25th of February, we will be doing the third phase of our strategic planning process, the The Guiding Coalition will go on Friday night from 4:30 to 8:30, and then on Saturday morning from about 9:00 to noon, where we will continue the process that we've been engaged in, which I think is a very exciting process, to come up with a strategic plan for our district, which is part of what it is that you need to do to get the sense of what the community wants. And it's been a tremendous community. We focused on our students, and they've been a very integral part of what it is that we're doing. And it will take us farther down the road of this, this Student Outcomes Focused Governance. And looking forward to participating in that as well. So, but that, that's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez.
I'd like to begin by congratulating the Jordan High School Boys and Girls Basketball Teams. The girls are playing tonight in the playoffs. Both teams made it to the playoffs, and the boys will be playing on Friday. So we're really excited, and congratulations to, to the teams, to the coaches, and to the Jordan community. And like Dr. Benitez, I also want to acknowledge the Middle and K-8 School Office for putting together the School Choice Fair. And of course, the teachers and the students who spent their Saturday morning there highlighting their great programs. The students I had the opportunity to speak with were super informative and incredibly impressive. And, and then finally, I'd just like to acknowledge the principal at Lindsay Middle School for her warm welcome. I had the opportunity to visit the school and tour the school with her, and she gave a lot of insight to her programs. And I am looking forward to visiting other schools in District 1. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, my turn. Okay, so let's see. Oh, Mr. Miller, did I forget you? Oh, my goodness. I'm gonna blame it on our colleague, because anyhow. Mr. Miller.
My bad. I'm interrupting our president over here.
Let's just say it's been a slightly uneventful meeting agenda, but a lot of work's been done today, a lot of conversation. So it's okay. No, no worries here. Well, I got a couple of things. First, we had one of our student recognitions today that really, really made me smile. And this was YBS over at Wilson High School. So I'm a product of YBS at Milliken, and I'll be honest, our group was great. This was 25 years ago. I said that very light on purpose, but it was enlightening. It was, it was a group of young men and young women that made me feel accepted in our, in a space where there weren't a lot of us, in all honesty. And so when I look at the Young Black Scholars Group at Wilson, which started off, according to Jonathan, who was doing a smash-up job over there. Started with eight students. Now it's almost at 100 people a part of YBS. Let me say that again. Started with eight, now almost at 100. They're just doing such a great job, and it's really a coalesce of the, of a community over at Wilson. And so though the video was fantastic, it was a two-minute snapshot. In all honesty, I don't know if it does justice of the impact that it's having for those young people, especially around the big topic that we have here during this month, which is Black excellence. And so I've just been really, really impressed with him and Diane Cohen over there. So I wanted to give them both a really big shout out, because they've been kicking butt and taking a couple of names in the process. Speaking of Black History Month, I've talked about it already, but I will put another plug for the big celebration event going on at Jordan High School on the 23rd. I'm excited. I've heard a little bit about the lineup and some of the performances. I won't leak too many of the details, but I'm excited to be a part of the program. And I've been really impressed with a lot of the work that Alyssa's been putting towards this program. And so I think that it's something that the district and the Black community for the Long Beach Unified School District, employees and students alike are gonna be very, very proud of. And so I will encourage everybody to be in attendance. I think there's only like 1,500 seats, but obviously, we would love for everybody to show up, because I think it's gonna be one heck of a show. Last but not least, and I'm probably spilling the beans, but I got really excited when I got this, this news. In support of Black History Month, there was a, and I can't tell all the details. This is the part that's tricky. But there is a A-class celebrity who is going to be at Poly High School tomorrow as part of the 10-year reunion of their famous movie. Drum line. That's all I can say. That's all I can say. And so I'm excited for that.
Okay. Not that you're trying to create any kind of stir at Poly tomorrow. Yeah. But what I will add to the event next week for February 23rd at Jordan, Black History Month Celebration, is that you have to register online.
Yes.
So be sure and register online to do that. And I think now it's my turn, unless I, unless I've forgotten anybody else. But so a couple of weeks ago, there was the Long Beach Symphony, Long Beach Symphony for Young People. So I want to thank Jim Petrie and Paul Bailey for coming out of retirement to help. They came out of retirement to help Renee Batia, Christine Whip, Nader Chual, and everyone else who made this event work. And, and let me tell you, it's thousands of students. And so it's thousands of students coming in to the Terrace Theater and thousands of students going out all at the same time, so we can accommodate two different shows in one day. And it was fabulous. It's for our fourth and fifth graders. I'd also like to thank our generous sponsors. The, the music is great. The conductor is great with the kids. This year, there was a flamenco dancer who came out on stage, and-
Was it from the Opera Carmen?
You know what? Yes, I believe so. Yes. And she was in red. Anyhow. So, so the symphony is playing. Oh, and some of our high school students were playing with the symphony. That was, that was exciting also. When the flamenco dancer came on stage, all the kids in the audience at the same time, you know, reacted like, 'cause she's in red, she's got this hat. Anyhow, fabulous. The kids were so polite and cordial. They were well-behaved coming out from that performance. You know, they were so appreciative. I'm, I'm just standing there, you know, greeting people or actually, you know, in the way, and they're thanking me. I had nothing to do with it, but it was wonderful. It was just wonderful. And then the following week, we had the all-district instrumental music concert at Jordan, which is fabulous, because that Jordan auditorium looks like the Terrace Theater when you're inside. It's impressive. And that one was featuring our middle and high school students. And thank you again to Renee Batia and Christine Whip. They have been very busy. And all the music teachers throughout the district, because it was the honor instrumental concert. And so it was students from across the district, middle and high school. And then also at Lakewood High School, there was a concert that featured Lakewood, the Lakewood Jazz Band. And they had an opportunity to play with members of the Poncho Sanchez Band. And that was part of the show, and then the rest of the show was that Latin jazz band. This is Grammy Award-winning, you know, musicians. And when the students were playing with the professionals, they, they were holding their own. And, and then when it was time for one of the band members to have a solo, their attention was rapt on that soloist. I mean, it was really incredible. And I have to say, through all of these musical events, you know, especially the, the instrumental music concert at Jordan, those middle, middle school artists and high school artists, they were so good. And this is the, the honor orchestra and band. They were so good. You, you would not know they were students. You would not know they were kids. They are that good. It was just incredible. And, and I was thinking, I was so proud of the fact that even through the Great Recession, we maintained a music program. It was pared down, but it was, it was maintained through the Great Recession when we were making cuts district-wide, and, and you know, that was a horrible time. But we hung on to music. We hung on to the arts. And then, once we recovered from that recession, we put money into our music program. We put over a million dollars into new instruments. And I just want to thank all the music teachers and everybody else to show that we value music in our district. We value the arts. Let's see. So now I'll turn it over to our deputy superintendent, Dr. Brown.
Thank you so much. Just a few events that are coming to highlight. Some of them have already been highlighted. But we're really excited tomorrow night, 5:30 at Cabrillo High School, to have our third annual recruitment fair for teachers and administrators. So for anyone who's listening, any of our 2 million viewers that are listening and want to teach in Long Beach in an amazing community with incredible, incredible students, please join us tomorrow night at Cabrillo. Mr. Miller, I'll add to your shout-out about the amazing event that will happen next Thursday at Jordan in celebration of Black History Month. One of the things that feels particularly exciting about that event is with Alyssa Taylor-Stewart's leadership. There's been a lot of student input in the planning. And whenever our students get involved in planning, everything gets better. So really looking forward to that. Mr. Otto, you mentioned the Guiding Coalition that's happening, the third Guiding Coalition that's happening on Friday, February 24th, and Saturday, February 25th. And I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of things. One, the leadership of Viva Mogi and Lucy Salazar in partnership with our core team and our partners from Prospect Studios, who have been guiding the Guiding Coalition process. I want to also acknowledge that for those who have participated in all three Guiding Coalitions, this third round will be the culmination of 36 hours of participation. And that feels particularly important, because as we talk about getting wider with our level of engagement, which we've absolutely done in this process, we've also gone a lot deeper. And that feels like a really important new step for us as we work towards our next strategic plan. And then there was a lot of nice acknowledgement to the Middle School Choice Fair that happened a couple of weeks ago. And I just wanted to acknowledge that our Office of Equity Engagement and Partnership is working really, really hard as we engage further and engage differently. Events like that don't happen without the tremendous effort, coordination, specifically of that office. They are the behind-the-scenes people who set up booths and stay and answer questions, engage with our community, provide interpretation, and make sure that everything goes really smoothly so that we can do the deeper type of engagement that we want to do with our communities. So I just want to specifically acknowledge the work of Dr. Lucy Salazar, Stephanie Heilig, Alyssa Taylor-Stewart, and others, Carmen Hernandez, others who are part of that office. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Well, that concludes our meeting for this evening. But the Board was contacted by a King Elementary teacher today, notifying us that her 18-year-old son, who is in the Navy, passed away. So in honor of Alonso Sanchez, I'd like to close the meeting. But also, she's suggested that we take a moment of silence for all of our Long Beach Unified Families who have lost a loved one this year, and not just first responders, not just our, our, you know, family members who have served in the military. But we're, we're still on the, you know, hopefully outside of COVID, and, and we're still dealing with loss. So, so we'll adjourn the meeting. But as we adjourn, let's just take a, a moment to acknowledge that amongst all the wonderful things that are happening, we, we still have, we still have loss, and we still have loved ones who, who will be missed. So thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight, and the meeting is adjourned.